All right, sorry for the interruption. I'd like to turn your attention to the agenda that is before you. And on your agenda, it has the old business. Has everybody, every council member had a chance to look at the minutes of the last minute of a previous meeting? I'll get my tongue untied in a minute. And is there any additions or deletions to that? Seeing none, Chair would entertain a motion to accept the minutes as presented.
I'll make a motion.
Have a motion on the floor. Do I hear a second? Yes, have a motion and a second, Dan. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify of accepting the minutes as presented and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Minutes are accepted as presented. All right, we move on into new business. Every council member should have a list of the outstanding bills that are due and some other things here that I suppose we're going to, you'll be discussing these linked accounts then, but that's it?
It's just the report that we need to include in the packet to get in front of the Board.
Okay. All right, well, we'll go first of all then to the checks that are before you. The claims list. Any questions?
There's Cooley Plumbing in the back there, what's that? 442.
That was a sewer that was stopped up over the weekend and Mitch is the one who handled that. He called in in the help because he couldn't get them unstopped. And it was not an impossible thing for them since they burned up one machine and had to get another.
This is bucket truck inspection, 325. I don't know how much that would cost.
It's an annual. It's an annual inspection.
And Gavin's training is 625, so he's waiting for more than one time.
It's gonna be, he'll be gone for almost a week.
Oh, so he is gone.
He needs to, in fact, he'll be a certified fire department. They do all the training for the department.
For the fire department, you say?
No, for the police department.
Oh, for the fire.
For our qualification, we have to do that.
So that results in long-term savings, Scott?
Oh, yeah. Because then we don't have to pay out. At other times, we will have, if we don't have a fire department here in the department, then we've got to pay every time we go to the range with another department.
That's usually 150 bucks.
A lot of times, yeah.
That's everybody on the force.
Right. And really, I believe that we need to be shooting several times a year. This is the minimum of what, and then they'll be certified for three years, so.
Yeah.
So that way, they'll be able to meet the next three years. All it's gonna cost is a range.
Scott, this is related while we're on the topic. Do you have kind of a training plan?
Oh, yeah.
For your folks?
Yes, I do.
Because that's something I've noticed in past budgets, there's not been a lot to get to pay to.
No, in fact, if you want to go over to CPD, I've got the board, I've got a list that I've been going to training when for the next several months.
Are you diversifying your force?
Yeah, I'm, basically, I've taken the people that I believe are strong in certain areas, and I'm sending them to forces to help them with that. And then others that I think need some help in other areas, I'm sending them to training for that. It just depends on their experience and what their position in the department is.
Good deal.
What training I assign them.
That's great.
And this Davis training, 495, what's that?
That's an investigation, investigation training. He's gonna be one of, you know, he's been doing some investigation work. I was told he's a good investigator, so I thought that was strength that we needed to build on.
So he'd never had that training before?
I'm sorry?
He had never had that training before?
No, he said he hadn't had that training before, so.
Which officer is that?
Jake Davis is gonna go there. It's like interrogation school, questioning suspects, anything like that.
He does a pretty good job.
That's all I can remember.
I guess money was spent. That's good.
Any other questions about the bills as presented?
I'll make a motion with approval.
Okay. I have one question about Smith and Edwards Construction Company that we've got a warrant before us for a bill before us for 225, 2741. It's 021918.
Oh, the one for the, that's UV.
Right, that's the UV project, and I was just looking over it. Sam, is this the last bill we'll receive from these folks? Is this the total payment?
No, this is not. This is their first draw, and there'll be one more, and it will be for 20,000 or something.
Right.
30,000, I don't know the exact number.
Have they completed all items on the contract?
Basically, yes, and they're not through yet. They're, they've got a little bit to go, but they should be turning everything on next week. The person they're waiting on right now is the people that provided the UV equipment.
Right.
So that's who you're waiting on, they're supposed to be here next week.
Okay. So with this, it looks like that we're gonna have a balance due of about this much, too? Is that right? You're saying that this is a partial payment of the work being performed?
Yes, there's one other draw. There'll be two draws, all of that, this morning, we'll pay at night, and then the rest.
The second draw is for how much, Sam?
20,000.
20,000, so this is the bulk of the payment?
Yes.
I've noticed we're cutting the check for 220, so we obviously have the money on hand to hand with this.
Yes.
Very good. That's great.
Yeah, those were appropriated prior to?
Oh, yeah. I know that in the past, oftentimes, as is the case with the project at the theater, we could essentially pledge against our reserves, and so it's good that we can pay as we go on this one. That's kind of what I was asking.
And we'll, I'll do the grant paperwork and get hopefully half of that back, half of this back.
Yeah, yeah, see, the grant.
That was my next question.
Yeah.
So we're gonna get a refund of about 120,000 back, Walmart?
Yes.
Good deal.
Any other questions about the bills presented? We do have a motion on the floor to accept the bills as presented and pay the bills. We have a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye if you accept. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We can pay the bill. Next thing on your agenda is the citizen comments. This time, we set a time aside for anyone in the audience which wishes to come to the microphone and speak, and I'd ask that you state your name and your purpose. And generally, I ask for three minutes. If it takes a little longer, it takes a little longer. But are there those in the audience which wish to come before us and speak? This lady's up in front, is that all right, Bob? Let's let Ms. Sartan come to the podium. And most of us know who you are, Carol, but tell us again, please.
Hi, I'm Carol Sartan, and I just want to commend the police force. We, my husband put in a call because two neighbors, pit bulls, got after him and another neighbor, and they were there very quickly and took care of the situation. I always wanted to tell them thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Appreciate, always appreciate positive comments. Right, I think there are others. Yes, Bob, I'll recognize you at this time. Come forward, please, to the mic.
Your microphone isn't that loud.
It's not? I'll get closer.
And my voice is that loud.
Yes.
Last year, National Day of Prayer, we had a wonderful meeting at the high school. Some of you were there. Mayor was there, and Reverend Burke. And again, the first Thursday by congressional order is a National Day of Prayer. And I am in charge of organizing a committee, and we want a place to meet. We'd like to meet on Fridays. We'd like to meet tomorrow night with an original group, and then announce in the paper two meetings in March and two meetings in April, separated by two weeks. And last year, we had a wonderful participation with laypeople doing all of the work, hoping that our committee will kind of see that as precedent for this year, but we'll find out. And we'd like to ask, I'd like to ask, if you would approve that the committee could meet here as a neutral place that isn't connected with any other church, and we could meet Fridays with, as long as it's, Leslie, it's clear with the schedule. And I'd like to make that as a request. Would you please grant us that privilege? Would be five meetings. Tomorrow night would be the first, and then two times in March and two times in April.
If you need a motion, I'll make it.
Any question?
Can't they do that, can they? Can we have them?
Can we have them meet here?
Yeah.
They can meet here if you're having separation of terms, state.
Well, Shannon just talked, the state auditor just talked to me about it this week, not that.
Okay, I don't know what the auditor said. In my general, I've dealt with this in other cities, and the general rule is you're allowed to let religious groups or organizations use your city facilities so long as in the future, if some other group wanted to use your facilities, you can ban them. So if somebody of a religious sect is not.
The Wiccans wanted to be here.
If you want to meet here, you gotta let them meet here.
Of course, we're talking about a congressional order.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that. I'm saying that, and that's the city.
So what we have here before us is a request, and Jim Ashley's got the motion on the floor to accept this request and to grant it as presented. And we have our legal counsel saying, telling us that we can do that. So is there a second on the floor?
Oh, second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Yeah. Leslie, do we have any conflicts with times? Are the auditors going to be here? I know they work out of this room.
Monday through Thursday.
Okay, so we're clear?
Yeah.
That's on question.
So what time is that?
Seven o'clock.
Seven in the PM?
PM, Friday.
Yes.
Friday night, and we'll work together with Leslie to be sure no conflict.
I mean, I know we will be here to let them in.
Let's do a second follow-up to that. We're in the midst of a state auditor right now, correct?
It's very hectic.
And you've had an auditor tell you she does not think we should do this.
Right. I cannot remember what brought that up.
It's kind of a procedural caution. Edict, I'm not trying to play devil's advocate here, but I guess I am, in so much as.
I wonder if we could have it, or if they could have it at the senior.
Senior citizen, I will ask the director this evening after the meeting.
Would that, would that be plausible for you, Bob, to meet there instead of here, City Council, of course?
Sure. I'll tell you what, I think it would be different if we had a congressional edict for the Wiccans to perform something. I think we're talking about two different things. We're doing this to comply with a congressional edict.
Yeah, I don't know, there's probably, I think what's being brought up here is just is, I don't know what the state auditor's issue is with that.
I can't. She, I used to know she said.
But I mean, if they've, if they've said that they don't think we should, and if there's an alternative place, and why poke the bear?
I think it'd be better, I'm not saying I agree with it, Jim, I.
I know. I understand.
It just worries me because I, I, it's kind of like if a cop says, you know, better not do X, and you do it, don't be surprised when they light us up for doing it. And that's my concern. Again, Bob, nothing against you. I've attended your National Day of Prayer event, and I think it's a wonderful thing.
Do you think they'll ever make us take that down off the wall?
There's a very good possibility in the future. In the future.
Really, they are.
In the future, there's a very good possibility.
And if they say no, we are not gonna take her down.
I, yeah.
Someplace, we've got to draw the line.
I would agree with you on that.
I don't, I don't understand the difference between this group meeting in City Hall to plan an event that's gonna take place in the public high school.
I, I agree. I'm, and I'm not, I guess I shouldn't have been brought up the Wiccan. I don't know what the state auditor's issue is.
I understand, I know.
We moved past the million God we trust and taking them down. All I, what this conversation shifted to is the state auditor here, and she doesn't think we should have it here. I don't know what their reason.
Well, it wasn't this, and I just, I don't remember exactly what we were talking about, but it was.
Essentially, the use of city facilities for, other than city business. I would assume that that is what her, and, 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 let's, let me say this. There is a precedent that exists currently. The Merchants Association meets at the library community room. The Friends of the Library, another private, there's precedent there. We've got, we've got multiple groups. Boy Scouts, I know, meet there. How about we have them meet at the community room at the library, which is, of course, a city building. It's one that's used to being open for later hours because Dolores can lock off that interior door so that there's no access to the library. It would be probably a safer place than City Hall, and there's a precedent there for us meeting. And is that okay, Bob? Would that be an okay place, the library meeting room?
Either, either that, or you.
It also is set up better than this room for a group meeting. There's a large table there that seats 25 people in the community room.
Sometime, if you come to the senior Senator, Marle, why don't we address it with Linda, our director?
Well, I think you're wanting to answer, aren't you, tonight? You'd like to know, because you're wanting to meet tomorrow, right?
Well, I'd like to meet tomorrow night, and I need to inform all these, not all these people, and we hopefully to get a large group.
How about the library? Let's just, are you cool with that, if we did that instead of council chambers?
I'm disappointed, but I'm cool with it. We can do it.
I, I do understand. It's, you know, as a crow flies, it's a quarter mile from here, and it is a public building. It is one that will fit the group, I think, better than, you know, there isn't really adequate seating for, in this room here, for a group meeting. The, the community room at the library, I think, is set up better. It's, it's, it was built for group meetings.
Good enough. Your input is appreciated. So be it.
Thank you.
I don't, we don't, we don't need a vote on that, do we? Just say.
Just have some self-call-outs.
Okay.
Just, yeah, just to call and set it up. I mean, Bob, we appreciate very much this opportunity to.
If Bob comes to see me at the paper, we'll make sure it gets announced to the public that the meetings will be there.
And you'll tell me after the meeting, dear, who to contact, to be sure I can do that.
Yes, yes. That'll be Dolores Turner. And 4193 is the number.
You know, I always appreciate folks coming and saying their piece, because this is, this is the free spirit of American government. But what made this country great is that right there, Bob. Right what's on the wall. And I'm afraid if we don't stand up those who believe in that, then we're gonna be weighed into balance and found wanting. And you know what I'm talking about.
I assure you.
Yes. So I much appreciate you and your willingness to head this up. And Lord willing, and the creeps don't rise, I'll be there again this next time, too. All right. Anything further from the citizens in the audience?
I think someone raised their hand.
We, we have a couple here. I'll recognize this gentleman in the back. You'd come to the podium, please. State your name and your purpose, please.
My name's Ron Preston. I apologize if I'm kind of behind the power card, we're just trying to get a handle on the situation's going with the own property. All the stuff that was surveyed and all we're doing, is that all contingent on whether they're annexed or not?
Yes.
So nothing's done until then? Are we, is it annexed now?
I'll leave that to Sam.
No, it isn't, but everything is contingent on that property being annexed or dispossessed.
To be more specific, to answer your question, Ron, initial contract was signed last week on the property, as I understand it. And there's kind of a process that, you know, once that property's closed to the new owner, then at that point, I think we actually have a letter of intent that has been signed with the prospective new owner, that he would sign, that would allow us to annex the property, and then we would do the work to the property. Make sense?
So the current owner is sold to a new owner?
Yes, that's correct.
That's what I have a note. Is there any projection on how long it says? Not all I know is what I've read in the paper, but it said in the paper that, you know, that it will pay back, you know, quickly, or reasonably quick. Was there any idea of projection on, on how long?
I don't have a study done. We do have, you know, an idea about how long it will take to pay it back, and, but the point is that we have to start somewhere, and so that's where we're starting. And we don't know yet how many businesses are gonna be out there, so we really can't put together a study.
Are we, so, Michael, within a few years?
Yes, I, yes, I'm assuming that, yeah.
I give you a comparison, Ron, for example. Recent figures, let's just, for discussion point, not in anything formal here, but let's say McDonald's, public records. Right now, they, that McDonald's is about 1.69. Okay? Well, you can do the math, the sales tax with the city collapse. So that would generate to the city, considering the sales tax revenue that they're, you know, a single, a single retail location like that's generating ballpark 30 to 35,000 in city sales. That's kind of a, the project we're looking at here is $325,000. So that's just one business. There's 13 and a half acres there.
The money that the city has is from, actually, a new collection from citizens?
You mean the money, the money that we have that we're borrowing against? Is that what you're talking about, Ron?
Well, I mean, the city's gonna, I mean, the expense of, the expense of doing utilities that the city is going to incur, I mean, is that, where's that money come from? I mean, is it, I'm saying, is it the citizens of Seymour that have, that the city has this money, Ron?
Well, we, we don't have a benefactor that's writing us checks.
No, it's, it's from taxes, and it's from some utility sales.
Well, I guess where I'm going with it is there's, there's people in this city that don't have city sewer. They have city water, and they have city electricity, they don't have city sewer. Is it wrong to think that they might like this? You know, when they see the city going out and trying to attract, trying to attract the property, which would result in income, I understand that. But I mean, they're sitting here with no city sewer. Is it wrong to think that they deserve city sewer? Maybe before somebody else that isn't in the city?
You know, that's, that's an excellent question, but did you have one specific property in mind?
I'm just talking about the own property up here.
Right, but are you talking?
There's sixty-some-odd city residents that don't have city sewer. Is it, am I thinking wrong? Is it, is it wrong to think that they might like to have city sewer before the city went out and gave somebody else sewer that is not in the city? They've been paying city taxes, you know, for, you know, for years, I mean, for time.
Good question. Sam, you want to address that?
Obviously, if we had the finances to already hook them up to a sewer, we would have done that. So we are operating within the income that we have now, and we haven't been able to take those projects on. So my thinking was that if we could do something that would produce some income, then we would be able to go back and do those kinds of things that we're bringing up tonight. And, but right now, we cannot. We just can't do it. So we've got to do that before we can do the other, I guess is what I'm saying. And, and I, you know, I sympathize with them, I do, though.
I'll do it this way, though, Ron. You know, growth stimulates growth.
I understand.
And, no, I know what you're saying, and unfortunately, we as a city have to sometimes look at situations as though you would look at P and L, profit and loss statement for a business. Let's just, for comparison, say, a fast food joint comes to the own property. And with that property, there is 30 jobs, with that, with that business, there are 30 jobs, which are 30 people in town that, that perhaps aren't employed elsewhere, and that payroll comes into our local economy. Not to mention the fact that that business becomes a utility customer, drawing really upon the infrastructure we already have in place, which doesn't cost us much of anything. And yes, we do have an expense of the water and sewer to that site, but we also see a payback mechanism, especially if there's additional growth at that property. There, there are a lot of benefits, other than just saying, you're providing water and sewer to someone who, who isn't even in the city limits, or who's a theoretical business, versus a customer base that is inside the city limits currently and doesn't have those services offered. The catch is, from a P and L perspective, is to run sewer to those residents, who, by the way, are part of the city limits. The sewer customers that you're talking about are all annexation. They're not part of the original city limits, not a one of those are. They're all annexes. And they also came into the city limits knowing that those services weren't going to be provided. There was no promises made, okay? I think that should be noted. The expense of doing that, there is no payback. I mean, there's a $35 a month sewer fee that we would collect. It would take 300 years to recapture investment. So by doing this for new growth, we're gonna make a profit with the new growth, which hopefully will produce revenue so that we can provide the loss services that we would provide residential. It's kind of a big picture thing. That's kind of how I see it.
Don't take me wrong, I lived here all my life. I'd like to see the town grow.
Yeah.
I really would.
Right.
And I understand that it takes money to make money. You know, I'm just looking at, you know, there's two ends of the stick, and I'm just looking at it from the end of the people that have been here maybe possibly for years, you know, unless they're everybody.
The problem is, we provide services without revenue, the city will go broke. That's the bad news. Or we have to raise service fees, like upping utilities and upping the few profit items that we have here as a city per se.
Anyway, and I'm, you know, I'm power card, but I just read, I read last week's, so it's.
Uh huh.
Two months ago.
Yeah.
Not the current.
Yeah, yeah.
Right. The one there from, uh, first, university. Has everybody read that? I mean, how do you?
Yeah.
How do you answer them? I mean.
Well, I can answer them by saying, there are no prospective sewers who are looking at that property. They've had that property for sale for 10 years, and no one's bought it. There's one, there's reason number one. The own property hits the sale block, and there are numerous bidders who want it. It's at a stoplight intersection, just like Rooster's is. All the variables are the same. No, no amenities at either site, but there are numerous sewers who want the own property. Again, Rooster's property's been for sale for a decade, no sewers. You, you kind of follow where the developers want to go. And there's an offer on the table, to us, so to speak, as a city, with a retail... We wouldn't be doing this if we didn't believe there was a legitimate retail sewer wanting to bring commercial business to our community. If Bobby and Rooster come to us with a Walmart neighborhood store, I guarantee we'll run water and sewer.
Amen.
I wasn't aware it was already under contract with the new...
Yeah, I mean, you know, one thing that Sam does for us is, is Sam recruits business for this community, and he's recruited us a business. And it's a unique business, it's one that we think will help our city. So we want to accommodate that growth, you know. For years and years, folks grow ripe that, oh, the city does nothing to help retail possible. Well, here we are, we're trying to do that. And it just wouldn't benefit one business at that thirteen and a half acres. There's room there for ten businesses to be in the future. That's a high-growth corner. And I think the fact that Casey's developed there and has had a great amount of success at that corner sort of gives a footprint of, plus, it's a gateway to the north with the Dollar General and some of those other businesses that are out there. So it's kind of a growth corner. You compare it to the other one, there's no growth possibility south of the tracks at that other intersection, because the train tracks block everything. And then adjacent to that would be a dairy farm, a Cook's Dairy Farm. There's no growth south side. North side, there is the old orchard. But again, we've accommodated the businesses that are out there, you know. We've helped the new ones that have come. But on their property specifically, again, it's been for sale for, and if you compare the per-acre price, it's pretty interesting to compare the Owen property to that property. So, anyway, I'm just, yeah.
I'm looking at it from the other end of the scale.
Yeah, I read the letter with interest. I understand what they're saying. But the difference is that there's kind of a line of folks that are interested in the C and K intersection. There's not any for the other. And when you look to the future, let's say an overpass comes to Seymour, which is probably going to come someday. We've been saying this since nineteen seventy-three. But even if there is one, that's the intersection of two state highways, C and K. That intersection will never go away, even with an overpass, because it's a gateway to... Not true with the other end. If an overpass comes, the only way you would get to those businesses there is an outer road. You got it. So to a developer, that makes their property less attractive. I hope that explains it, Ron.
Well, yeah, I just, like I say, I just, I only know what I read, you know.
Yeah.
I don't Facebook, and I don't...
Yeah.
But I try to get my ear to the ground at most, but I just, you know, look at it from the one end perspective.
Thank you for your comment, Ron.
I appreciate it, Ron.
Appreciate your comments. Yeah, I know there are others, this lady over here with, let me say this before, because Mike Gerkey wants to have a few words over here. And we are looking at, Ron, at the north side of the highway over there, and we know we've got a pumping station over there. What I'd like to see, what the mayor would like to see, is that the sewer run down on that side too, to accommodate that property on the corner, and then Mr. Gerkey, and then the Jared Clouds' property, and then others that may be coming. So, you know, if you have vision for things and you get ready for things, then when the opportunity comes, like it's coming, then it looks good for the city. And the city can grow, the city can gain more revenue, and the city can eventually do all those things that you asked us about. So, but you've got to have a plan. You've got to have a plan for that. Will it take long? You mind if I recognize Mike Gerkey first? Because I know this might take a little... Mike, if you'd like to come to the microphone. Tell us who you are and what's on your mind.
Mike Gerkey, I just, I talk to Ron every day. Ron works over here with us.
Oh, okay, good.
And I know he's coming up here, because, I mean, where the money's coming from, the money in the savings account is from the taxes paid from the people that are here. And there are sixty people without sewer. And I guess my request to you guys, and Paul knows this, because those are, had the same problem. We talked about this in Code seventy-one oh fifteen from Singapore. It has three years once you annex, bring sewer and water and all that. And it actually has to be in writing, so be careful what you do, as it is a procedure. And it takes public meetings and all stuff. It's not just simple, voluntary annexations per se. But anyway, always a, my request is, would you please just put a comprehensive plan together, a plan of when to bring the sewers, or what section of town, in some kind of timely manner over the next five, ten years? So you could basically publish it in a paper, so this is our goal. We're going to put in this section, this section, this section, this house, this house. And, I mean, the city's supposed to have a comprehensive plan, and you already know that. And if you could get just a goal put together for bringing sewer to everybody, so at least when it's being developed outside the city limits, at least it makes sense, because at least you're being thought of before, because following the money's one thing, but we aren't paid for it.
Yes.
It's worth two million dollars.
Well, taken.
And that's all I'm saying.
You'd be interested to know, possibly, Mike, that when we sat down with the engineer, I pointed out to him that we have properties to the north of town that don't have sewer yet. We know we've got a pumping station, we know we've got a problem with that, but to look at that and give us some idea about what we need to do over there.
Yeah, I don't need sewer. I know Lucky Bee Honey likes sewer, sewer'd be nice, I don't have to have it. Jerry's got a sewage system, he doesn't have to have it. But there's a lot of potential for development over there.
There is, and I agree.
But I don't know if that would be the primary compared to like in where Nadine's neighborhood's at. There's a lot more houses over there that probably need it more, that would probably cause more contamination than a couple of businesses. Because septic lines in the city's really not the best thing. We've got pretty good congregational septic systems in the city already. That could be a sanitary sewer, that'd be a lot better for everybody health-wise. And I think that's why they kind of wanted, in the statutes, they kind of wanted all that to develop kind of quickly, because of the sanitary issues. But me personally, don't think that I'm requesting sewer, I'm just saying that I've been there for many years. It would be nice, but it's not necessary. I'm not requesting for myself. But I do see potential growth there, potential growth in the corner, and over there, so, I mean, it all makes sense to me. But I'm not against any business coming to town, I'm not against doing this project. I understand if it comes through and it'll pay back, but, you know, we're still chasing care right now. But that's, I say, would you please put together a plan? It would be a heck of an user for everybody to look at that going, well, we've got to just set a comprehensive plan. We know we're going to bring sewer to Crescent Hollow Road, we're going to bring it over to Stacy Street. We're going to, we're going to do a plan of tack on which roads are going to asphalt first. Instead of following the people that are providing money to the city, well, it's our pay for it. Let's please focus on the people here already, even though you are God, and that doesn't mean that we have to... That's all I'm saying, but a plan would be wonderful.
And we have been in the re-institution of P and Z. We've already been talking about a comprehensive plan that will look out into the future, five years, and another one maybe ten years.
That's exactly what we need, and most of the other stuff goes away.
You've been reading my mail, I've been thinking the same thing. We're on the same page. Thank you, Mike. All right, I'm sorry to be able to do that, I thought Mike's comments might be brief. Now, I'd like to recognize this young lady over here. You'd come and tell us who you are, please, and I'll pass out your phone.
Alicia Hagan. And most of you know I have a home care agency that takes care of the sick and the disabled and the elderly. I'm here tonight representing one of those clients of mine. Larry's handing out a water test that was done. The client contacted me earlier this week because her husband is needing to do home dialysis. And the type of dialysis that he needs required a water test. The water test, although it meets the standards for a town of our size, it falls short of the national standards. So therefore, it failed, and he is not able to have this machine in the home for his dialysis. Now, this was news to me, because I didn't know that there was two different standards. I didn't know that we were living on a lower standard, just because we have a population of less than thirty-three hundred people. I also understand that it takes money, you know, to meet the national standards. However, the two things that are the problem are the iron and the lead. If you look on page two, you'll see what the readings are. The first is the results, and then there in the middle is the national standard. The iron, not so much of a big deal, and it's barely over the national standard. But the lead, that's a problem. And they said that if the water was used, it could actually kill him. So this is, you know, ever since I heard this, I thought, well, I'm not letting my family drink out of the faucet, you know. So I wanted to bring this to your attention, in case you didn't know it, and I wanted to ask you to please look at this and see what it would take for our town not to live with this lower standard that's been provided by the EPA just because we're small and a poor community, but what it would take for us to live with the national standard. And would it really be that much money to invest to get us there? Because overall, we're pretty good. But lead is a big deal. And the side effects of lead have, I mean, it's all over the internet, you can Google it. You can spend days reading on it. So I just wanted to give you this test result, I wanted you to be able to look at it. And I just ask on behalf of my client that you please consider upgrading our water system to meet the national standard.
Thank you, we appreciate your concern and your report. Sam, would you like to address that, please?
First of all, our water system here is regulated by the DNR. Every year, and I didn't know this until you and I met the other day, obviously, they've done some studies in my home. We have to do a lead test every year with the DNR. And every three years, every year. And it's a combination of eight samples that are taken at random in the city. And the DNR sets the line in the sand, and we have to meet that. And the history shows that we have been within their limits every time that we test.
You're still within the limits, and I want anyone here to think that I'm saying that the city is violating any laws or anything. What I'm saying is the standards for our city have been reduced because of the population that we have. And because the standards have been reduced, that's why we're meeting them. If we were, if we were put against the national standard, Sam, we would not be meeting them. We would fall short.
We don't know that, and...
Well, plenty of this report...
Well, I know, but I don't know where this water sample came from. See, this was done without any of my knowledge, and so I don't...
It came from a house here in San...
Okay.
Or the pipeline.
Yeah, okay.
And it was done by this Brazilian...
Is there a chance that this home would have had some lead pipes that would have...
That's very possible.
That would have, that would have, would have made their number higher than... Oh, let me just do this, Sam.
It's a good possibility.
Does this point three four nine lead result match what our city's lead result is, and that?
Can I give you guys the numbers?
Yes, Chuck, that's kind of what I'm wanting to know. What does the city, of the eight random surveys, what's our average on lead?
Well, I don't have an average on the lead. We got, in our DNR, basically, we send that to the samples.
Okay.
Doing from random homes. It varies from home to home, because if you do have an older home that's got a lot of lead pipe in it, you're going to have higher lead content. So from one house isn't a good example of our water system at all. I've got, first one here, the MCL, maximum peak output level by the DNR, is fifteen parts per billion on that. The first one here is two point three six.
Wait a minute, are these just the samples from a combination of older homes?
Yes. This is the DNR they take, and it's from, they take a variety from all the random samples. Yeah, we don't dictate those. The second one we got was six point eight six.
That's small.
Parts per billion.
I don't have that much.
The next one we got is seven point nine seven. Six point one zero, three point nine seven. The highest one we had was a ten point nine, which I'm sure that was an older home. We've got seven point three four. Then we've got another one here that ran less than one. And then we've got two point five nine, and then three point one three.
So all of your samples are lower than the one here?
Way lower, yeah.
I mean, way lower. Well, you've got to remember, per billion, so you're going to add two zeros before that first reading of any number he gets. You're running into a four on the second number, per se. Remember, it's parts per billion. So everything he's reading is going to begin point zero zero. So that being the case, all of our samples are reading lower than the ones taken out of this home.
Do they meet the national standard?
Absolutely, gosh, yes. That would be significantly lower than the national standard. Yeah. I mean, I think, Alicia, what we may be finding here, granted, we only have one sample, but this very well could be a case where, does this client live in an older home?
Yes.
I think that this might be a home pipes problem versus a city system problem, which is something we don't have any control over.
I totally understand that, I totally get that. Because this information is stuff I can use. I'm looking at my client, who wants to stay at home and wants to do some dialysis as opposed to going to the nurse, and, you know, so that's why I'm... But, you know, I'm like, that's one of the waters, Sam.
Well, and I'm not trying to blindside you either. Like, as I said this when I started, I didn't have this information when you and I talked.
Right.
Or we could have discussed it then. But once you give this to me, I have to do my homework, and get involved in that and help find out.
I will pass this information on to them, unless they have to.
What is the solution, I'd just like to ask the question, what is the solution for them? If they can't use...
They have two options. One, they can install a reverse osmosis system, which would run them anywhere from thirty-five and fifty dollars a month. And, which, you know, doesn't sound like a lot, but to somebody who lives on a fixed income system. But anyways, or the other option would be to go into a...
Do they own their home, Alicia?
Yes, they do own their home. And they can give, you know, boiling water, like you said, just kind of gallons of osmosis when they're on the, from water, you know.
Yeah. How much did you say a week?
Chuck, let me ask you this. Does adding chlorine to water reduce all these numbers? Make some worse?
Yeah, because these are most, chlorine's not going to do anything.
Chlorine does nothing.
What you do over time on the lead and iron pipes, you build a coating there, and that insulates the water from the pipe. When you add chlorine, it heats that coating away, it exposes the metal.
Can I make a scene?
So then, your iron, getting any metal, your levels go up. And that's like Michigan, certainly had...
Right, right, Detroit area plant. Yeah.
You know, we did, we do have, and what I'm circulating there, Sam, is the report that we had from the Department of Natural Resources, and it speaks to the chlorine issue in the water. But we have, I understand that, of course, they send the mayor one, they send the city one, I suppose. But we have complied with this response.
Yeah, you need me to address that a little bit?
If you would, please.
We have, over the past few months, received some bad samples from our water testing, and that bad sample was caused by coliform. It's not a matter of whether your water has coliform in it or not, it's a matter of how much it has in it. And obviously, the DNR draws a line in the sand and says, if you go over that, I'm going to tell you that it's bad, and that's what's happened, okay? So we have found out that all of our test sites for the city are from homes and businesses and so forth. So we went back to the DNR, and they suggested that we buy these units that actually go in the ground that's now right on the water. that's now right on the water main, between the water main and the water meter for the house. Okay? And I have purchased those with the... I didn't get with everybody, but I went ahead and done it.
Yeah.
So, I left my hand.
Yeah, help.
But anyway, I went ahead and bought the, I went ahead and bought them. And we're going to get them installed here as quickly as we can. And I feel like that, once we eliminate all the lead and other kinds of contaminants in a home in our building, we will get our water back where they are samples.
So, does the city have any lead pipes already? Are they, have they all been switched out?
They have not all been switched out. We don't have any lead pipes, but we do have lead cities. And there's pipes that are put together in the city with lead from years ago. And so, that is like a long time ago.
Sam, can you tell us about what the cost of that was for? And there will be roughly 2,000 of those? Is that, am I hearing you right?
Oh, no, no, no.
Just on the testing site?
Just on the testing site. I'm all five.
You sent us an email on this issue?
Yeah.
Yes, I did.
Okay.
And I asked permission, and I got some permission, but I responded.
Well, I'm not using email because I've been hacked.
Oh, okay.
So, if anybody gets any email from me, do not open it.
Okay.
But anyway, we do have those things in, and we have them in place. They have a, I'm just adding some in.
Sure, sure.
And on top of them, they have a quick disconnect. And so, we have a sterile one that connects right to the top of the unit, like spray, please, and make sure it's clean. And then we take the test right out of the, out of the main water line. Yes, it's a better reading. And, yeah, we're just fighting with all of these contaminants and so it's eliminated that by doing it. And it's one time cost of $5,000 is what I spent.
Okay. That's what I was going to ask next. Any other questions for Sam? Or for this lady that graciously came? Thank you, thank you. And, you know, it is, you're looking at cities across the country that have aging infrastructures. And as those structures age, they're going to break down at different levels. And our water lines, our sewer lines, all those things, you know, you'd have to be a genius to figure it all out correctly. But what we are doing is we're going to begin to look at this thing, maybe in quadrants, divide this town into so many units, and look at that part of the town and say, this is the worst part. This is where we're fixing pipes most often, and seeing how we can correct that and make it better.
Can I ask a follow-up question, Larry?
Yes.
It's kind of a good resource for Alicia while she's here. We've got Chuck, who's our water guru. And I'm just saying on any particular home, Chuck, that's got old lead pipes in it, which is a lot of them in our town. Would it be beneficial for that, for any particular home to have a water softener? Would the water softener remove iron, things like that?
It's got several programs.
That's what I was wondering. So, a solution to this potentially might be for this person if they bought a water softener.
Hey, people can do that. It's a reverse osmosis system.
Uh huh.
And its average is between $35 and $50 a month for that. So, we have a thing for that, but I mean, yes, it would work.
Okay.
It's just a matter of the internet.
Economic.
And then being able to pay for some...
Yeah, right.
Economic.
We can go through how, if you locate, not just lead pipes, but, you know, any new copper pipes that you want. Really, solder them a little bit, old pipes, fixtures, old faucet fixtures.
Which makes it worse.
Those have lead soldering, yeah. So, maybe go through and update some of the fixtures in the home.
Well, I mean, it's probably, it's probably cheaper if they just do reverse osmosis.
Yeah.
Yes.
It's about $1,000 or $2,000.
Yeah.
Sure. You know, there's a new system out, it's called PEX, and there's more than that. But it's basically plastic, they're easily fitted together, and they're recognized by the National Board. So, plumbers are going to that. It's just an easy fix. They don't have to do everything that had to do before. So, in these new homes, I suspect, and I don't know, haven't looked at Mr. Cardwell's homes, I don't think they have plumbing in it yet. But I would imagine they would go to these new systems, you know, this pipe that looks like plastic. But I understand it will swell to three times its original size before it would freeze and bust like the old galvanized pipe systems and in the copper systems that we have. But, you know, we're catching up with the times. But there's new things on the horizon, and I think as we get to that point, there'll be good answers for that. And it won't be all that expensive to do. You know, you might look at that, too, because that's a product relatively inexpensive. Just the labor cost putting it in would be the major thing.
Right. And of course, you have to remember, we're talking about safety.
Sure.
Really safe.
Right.
You know, there's probably, I mean, I'm going to write them a name if they're having a type of, you know, osmosis that they don't have. Or they can't leave the whole, the usual dialysis booth and such.
Sure, I understand that.
All that work is being done. Yeah, so it's not really feasible for them, per se, but I can see that it benefits someone else. Since there are a lot of them, I probably do have to...
Yes. Good point, very good point. And if you live in Seymour and you're drinking water, you'd be concerned. And I do, I drink the water from the tap every day. Maybe I need to watch, Chuck. No, no, I'm sure that's going to get better, but I have some old filtration systems I might start using. Anything else now from anyone in the audience who would like to come to the microphone and speak to the issue? Appreciate all of you that have come and the comments that you have, because it's always beneficial. All right, we're going to move on then, counsel, to the next item on your agenda, and that's the bid opening, tree trimming on the square.
There's just one bid received.
And we have one bid?
Yep, from a nurse out of Springfield.
What's the bid amount?
Not exceed $10,000, $1.55 per hour.
I make a motion, we approve it.
I'll second it. Well, the only thing I would caution the council is that...
Not exceed $10,000.
Caution the council that this was not a budgeted item.
Yes.
And since it's not a budgeted item, you know, and since we are under audit, we might, it might behoove us to look at that and figure out how, if we're going to spend these funds, then have some kind of plausible plan to adjust it over the...
Well, last time I looked at city payroll, we're $100,000 under projections at present time, so there's plenty amount of money in the budget. I mean, I think that Chuck has addressed this board prior, and he's made it really clear. The arborist is saying the longer we wait, the greater chance we have these trees dying in the square. Is that correct? We've waited too long.
Yeah, and now's the time.
As it is, I want to do it.
And now's the time to do it instead of waiting till...
Place?
What later?
How long's it coming to my house? That's too written in my book.
Chuck, do you know how long they've been in business?
Well, he's a certified arborist.
Yeah, what'd you say?
I'm not sure how long.
Mine have been in business for about...
Yeah.
And they need to be cut back.
Yeah, I know, we've been on this for a little while, but one thought might be that we could search out those places that do this sort of thing and see if we save the city a little money. But it's a pleasure of the council.
How much was Willow Greens, this and the same, one of us?
Willow Greens doesn't do this, but they recommend it.
Oh, they recommend it.
Yeah, they do.
I agree with Dan.
We've been on this for two months.
We can find the money. I think we ought to go ahead and do it.
I've got a motion, and Jim seconded it. Let's, I want to vote it.
All right, any... Now, this says, Chuck, not to exceed $10,000. Do we anticipate it might be less than that then?
Two steps we can take to get it off down.
You told us at the last meeting we can reduce it by $2,000 to $3,000 if we lose our own labor.
Yeah, hog off and brush ourselves.
Exactly.
Takes up so much time for them to drag it off and chipper.
Right.
I trust.
Bring our chipper truck up, and we drag it and chipper it, we could save hours and hours of money.
I'm certainly in favor of doing that.
Yeah, I think we'll pass it.
Yep, let's, let's go.
All right, we have a motion on the floor, I believe, down there, didn't you, Dan?
Yeah, I'll second it by Jim.
We've got a motion on the floor and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, could I have a vote, please? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Seeing none, motion carries, passes. Chuck, pursue that and tell him to sharpen his pencil. Next thing on your list would be the utility rate, electric rate utility board. And that, I'm ready to do my thing this evening. And I have five names to submit to you. Let me lay my hands on them. Here we go.
Now, there's one item on this referendum or on this structure that we put in place for this committee. We had several things that we addressed, how long they would serve under performance, and different things about if they could live in the city or out of the city, two of which could be out of the incorporated city limits, three of which would be inside the incorporated city. So, I would like to propose a change on the records that live in the composition to say this. The Electric Rate Utility Commission shall be composed of five members. Two members shall either own, run a business, or own residential property within the city of Seymour. The other three members shall reside within the incorporated city limits. For the city of Seymour, all five members shall either be, all should reside in, own a business in Seymour or own residential property in the city. And of course, with this one exclusion up there, everything remains the same. And that would allow us...
So, the only real change we're looking at is versus the out-of-town member versus owning property if they operated a business?
Operated inside.
I don't have a problem.
If they own or operate with nice. And here are the votes, and I'll pass this round to you. Of course, I've suggested these names at other times, and now I'll bring them all together. Mr. Bruce Denny, Ms. Carol Sargent, which is here with us this afternoon. Vernon, the city of Copeland, which is here with us this afternoon. Sheila Sturtlet. And, and Kelly. And I have a little resume of your questions.
Of each one?
If you'd like to review those, and then I would submit to you, these are my appointments for that vote. With your approval, and with that change in the records, this, members of that board, we'll move forward.
Thank you, Larry, for getting all that together. That's great.
Thank you.
At this point, are you looking for essentially a motion to approve your candidates?
I would, we need, we've already passed that we're going to do this commission, but we did not institute, as Leslie pointed out, the records that live for these appointments, and of course, all five, which I have.
Do you have suggestion for the length of service on terms for each of the candidates?
I do. Here's the way I would like for you to consider these votes. Ms. Sturtlet, two years. Ms. Carol Sargent, three. For Mr. Copeland, four years and 15 appointments. In respect of the, those that qualify under the terms of our call. Two of these votes, Ms. Emilio versus our man, Regis.
Have you set a scheduled meeting date?
Have not yet, because I waited on this meeting. Did you get that? And then we'll move forward to a meeting. That would be a foundation meeting, so that what we do at that meeting is to approve each president, this vice president, this secretary, and what meeting frame that we want to have.
If approved tonight, when would you anticipate that organizational meeting?
Probably next week.
Which, and then in turn, kind of follow-up question, then they would have their first public meeting potentially in April?
For a public meeting, it's just a, that's true.
Okay.
To be the face of this board, if we're... See, I'm going to be there with them at the foundation meeting, and then beyond. This board will need its own position, and I'm always gentle. I have expressed to them that my concern is to make sure that we have a fair and equitable place for the citizens. And we're taking a real part in what we do.
Would the city have a representative at these meetings also?
You know, the records that doesn't call for any representative to be there. Any member of the council, or the city minister, or myself, of course, could say in my own meetings, I do intend to be there. Lay out a format for this, this vote. And to let them know that they can receive from us, to make those decisions that they need to make. And the study that we did on U. Kelly, and we found out with the EPA, too much, so they're going to be level now. It wouldn't be up to them much. And there should be in that recommendation, what, in that study that we did, the yearly, the youth committee can be responsible for that year that we beat. So, because that's the vision among these people. That they could get those numbers from us, that have those numbers from the city, and we'll make that decision. If I need a motion, do I hear a motion?
Can I make a motion?
We have a motion on the floor to accept, as presented. Okay? We'll hear a second.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Furthermore, as you know... I don't know, Charlie can't be here, as you say. No, I was at the 19 minute. Okay? Okay, here, here's the thing. Me, Charlie Ivy, say aye or no aye.
Are we on the next item on the agenda, Larry?
Well, I think so.
Okay, just make a stretch.
Enhanced enterprise.
Yes. Okay, yes, enterprise, enhanced enterprise. And this is called, acronym for this is S.P.E.C.
Seymour.
Enhanced Enterprise. There you go. I learned something. I'm looking at this mechanism. All right, Seymour, Enhanced Enterprise. So, here's what we got. We have had a public meeting here in the past, but things that you can find under this, I understand, and correct me if I'm wrong, that the Kelly factory is last participant in this program that we have here in the city. Is that right?
No, actually, the storage unit that's out, but past Charlie's house is still in there.
Cripple Creek.
Cripple Creek.
Cripple Creek.
Okay. So, we do have two that are in. Now, ever, you know, we're looking at development here. We're looking for ways to grow the city. And we're looking at a really good, we're opening doors, lots too, with man and good prayers, and Lord's help. And this, we're just where we need to go. But this, this, this committee would enable us to be able to participate in that thing once more. Our committee is dysfunctional, it is disbanded, and so we need to re-form. So, I think, correctly, is Joanne still on that?
She was still on, we still have one member, so.
And, but as such, we're non-functional.
They haven't had a meeting in a couple of years, that's right.
That's right, and we've got to have so many in order to function.
Right, and so this brings us up to speed, so we can help out these new businesses.
Sam, the businesses, if we, let's say we're looking at industrial growth in the future.
Okay.
I'll, maybe I'll, I'll use an example here, and if, if I'm, if I'm talking out of school, you check me out. But, Mike, you're looking at expanding your business, correct? Right. So, you're looking to expand, would it benefit you, would it help push you to expand your business inside the city limits? So, would you expand within the city if we were, would it favorably?
So, that's, that's another problem.
Way to sneak that in, Mike. Wait, wait, yeah, that was sneaky. But, yeah, back, back to the EEZ.
It's a critical part of the committee.
Okay.
With the EEZ, in Seymour, the E here, the E there, but I can also do it through the state, the process, and that's what the call that dropped last time, and possibly the call, so I would, no problem, it's not going to be long, it's not why I would see it. But if it gives easier, I would like to add on, in Seymour, so, as I said, too. And the reason is, because we would need the package for that, and I agree. And I hope to add on about, in the victim job, I hired a gentleman here, who made a whole city entire machines out of this, and they're able to do this.
And do you receive economic benefit from us being, us forming and creating an EEZ?
Yes, yeah.
Yes.
It was important.
That's why I just want to get down the rec. And no more leads off.
Yeah, no more. Expanding the business, true, but this is what we want to do. If I do it, if I don't do anything else for you, if you don't remember the mayor for anything else, like this, remember, I'm here to help you grow. And that's, that's why I took this job, per se, why I ran for this job, is I want to sit this down, I would, I've done this before. And it makes, it's exciting for me to see things, big things come up out of the ground, I love to see them. So, with that being said, let me introduce these folks to you for consideration. First one is the one that was on the committee, and her term hadn't expired, and that's Joanne Pooch. Second one is Miss Denny. I can give you their term expiration if you like. She will go out twelve thirty-one eighteen. Mr. Denny would go out twelve thirty-one twenty twenty. Paul Ippa, and he will be at large, and his term will go out twelve thirty-one twenty twenty. Dan Wiener, he'll be on the thing, he'll be at large, twelve thirty-one eighteen. Okay, this is it?
Good.
Yeah, yeah.
Jerry Clark, at large, his term will go out twelve thirty-one nineteen. Kurt Penner, at large, twelve thirty-one nineteen. Dave Smith, who I don't know, but he's in Southern West County Fire Protection District. Anybody know Mr. Smith?
Yes.
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 So, his term will go out twelve thirty-one twenty twenty. And of course, a local contact would be Mr. Burke, our city administrator, and his term would be for chief, that some kind of, and never go back. And it never will. That's indefinite, to be honest with you.
All right.
So, anyway, those are the members I'd like to submit to you as appointments. Any discussion, do I hear a motion for the floor?
I'll make a motion, all of them, I guess, whatever, all good names, like all.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Board appointments are complete.
Can I see that real quick?
You may.
He's listening. Let's see, where were we at? If Mitch is not here tonight?
I have his report.
Okay, if you'd like to take care of that, Sam?
We've got a bid from Stobie Electric on helping with Poe, and also from Pike Electric, says he's sending in a bid this next week. And, and he says he will contact still another contractor for another bid, give us three bids. He's been working on the free plate product, project, out of, uh...
Of course, hangs a little bit, Mr., Mr. Dent? Is that where he's been working?
No.
No, I'm sorry. Or, oh, yeah.
I'm just chilling her out.
And some of that work has been hindered, of course, by the weather, because it's been really soft, and couldn't get the truck in there to do it. So, they've been helping with, helping the sewer guys, because they've had some sewer problems. And also, he says they helped the spittle, I don't know exactly what they did, other than they helped with parking lot lights. I know they did, and then one of the other churches called, and that's what they helped with, bucked the truck as well, and we did. Of course, he got on here, chased dogs, and, which they've done plenty of.
Yep.
And...
Skatch 'em.
And just, anyway, that's, that's it, it's important.
Any, any question for Sam about Mitch's report?
No.
Okay, we'll move on in then to the report by Mr. Smith, he is here. Chuck?
Firstly, I'm here, we're still working on the play area outside park. We're making some good progress on it, but unfortunately, now we've got problems with the play area.
Built some ducks out there.
Well, we're just about ready to set that new playset, and lay the landscape, the fiber down, and we'll have to rock all in after that. So, we're getting real close on it, it'll be done in a couple of times, or nine, or ten, or eleven. Gone into, spent a little more time clearing the office here lately. We had our Mirma audit this month, Kelly Beaton from Mirma come down, and we scored a perfect hundred this year. So, me and Leslie put a lot of time and effort into getting our score up, and it's finally paid off. Next thing I got is about streets. This winter has been brutal, on streets, the hardest freeze we've had, a lot of these roads that, that have needed attention, didn't get, are really starting to come apart. I've got a short list here.
Chuck, I'm looking at these pictures you provided us of these streets that have got damage. Are these, the only way to fix these is to lay new pavement on?
Yeah.
To that end, we've...
Chip and seal.
Sam, what do we have in unspent budget for street paving in the current fiscal year?
About seventy thousand.
That's budgeted?
Fifty-six.
Fifty-six thousand.
Fifty-six thousand, not much, you can't do much.
How about a chip and seal, would that?
Oh, God, no, no, God, no.
We've been there.
I'm just asking, just asking.
And, and Sam, I'm not trying to step on your toes here, but Chuck, you're our street leader here. And Jim has always kind of been the council's liaison to pe- paving. Is this something that you maybe could ferret out a little bit of time and get with Jim? And within the next, so often, after you run it by Sam, come up with a, after this winter's passed, maybe here in the next few weeks, come up with a game plan of, of streets that we need to get fixed this year?
Well, this is, this is actually my short list for that fifty-six thousand dollars. These are all high-traffic roads, these are really bad. We've, we've got a couple that are probably comparable, but they're low-traffic roads. Like, like the first one, this thoroughfare, going with us just past Sue, where maybe he lives. Once you get down to my Rick Beckford's house, there's roads rolls underneath your vehicle, I can't imagine where it does, I know Jim's track, but...
Yeah.
It rolled, it rolled more.
Once it becomes George, just, for probably about fifty yards, after, after you turn into Thoroughfare, and it's George, there's a big hump that's swollen up after this last bar street. It just came apart, and people fly down that road so fast, they, they beat it out, and we keep filling with gravel, and within a day or so, we beat out.
Do you think that, that these four roads you've listed here, the West Thoroughfare, George Street, Charles Street, and then C Street, would that take all of our fifty-six thousand?
I would like to get it done. What I would do, I would do the first one, the second one, and I think if you can do the third one, I believe, then what I would do is, is much done on number four again.
Did you check the north end of North Francis?
Yes.
That was approved to be repaved, but it got sidelined, hasn't been paved since Jimmy, since Jimmy Crisp was mayor.
I really think what we ought to look into, and these are bad, and they need fixed, but we will get more bang for our buck if we wait until the end of our fiscal year
Amen.
and budget as much more money with this fifty-six thousand as we can, because historically, what we've done, is we can get a bid, but the construction, but the paving companies have sat all winter. They're hungry, they're going to go to the biggest jobs that they've got.
Exactly.
And if we can put this off a little while, we can get more done.
So, roll the, roll this fifty-six in the next year's budget? Sam, what do you think on that?
I'm going to go ahead and get bids on all this stuff and be ready to do it. I agree with what Jim's saying, but I'm not going to wait until places found and start trying to get estimates on what it's going to cost.
Okay.
I'm going to go ahead and do that work.
If we can get that work done, I mean, that's fine, that's fine, I'm all for it, go ahead and get bids on it.
Right, I'm not going to wait, because I want, this has got to be done, and then, but I hear what you're saying. And, and the thing is, you know, we have historically had this line in the sand at a hundred and eighty thousand for paving, or a hundred and fifty, and we're going to really have to, have to put our thinking caps on this year, by the time.
No, go ahead.
That, no, that's it.
Do I consider North Francis? I mean, half of it's been paved, but the other half was not. We have a lot more Amish traffic going down our street because it's low cars, but a lot more Amish coming down there, and you know what that goes to the street?
See, it gets on, it's on my list, I've got a list of every street town, and what I've done is, if the ones that's got some heavy traffic, you know, move to the top. And with George Street, if we don't, if we don't...
We've got a lot of fast traffic.
But there's, there's so many streets, like you say, that, that are, don't have as much traffic on them that are in just as bad a shape, like Lorraine. Lorraine and Hodge and several of those guys.
You're right, you're right.
If we don't, if we don't repay George, we're going to have to do some, we're going to have to spend some money on it.
In one way or the other.
Yeah.
So, in essence, Sam, what you're saying is, let's start hammering this knock list out as quick as you can.
Right.
Just so that we know it's done.
Soon as the weather gets good, I'm going to order asphalt.
Okay.
I'm ready to do, I want to be ready.
We, we've got some potholes, too, that we need to address, different places. Those probably won't wait until you do the paving project.
Cracks.
But the gator back, like you're seeing here, is going to be really detrimental to what we got.
Pothole, we can get, we can get a little asphalt, and we do a small pothole.
Hot, maybe, yeah.
The lady that lives there on Square, you know, wheelchair, she would like to see those potholes fixed down behind my garage, and...
In the alley.
Yeah, in that alley, she says she can take a wheelchair down through.
You got one big one, right there, and we've got to patch and fix that as soon as the weather waves.
She said she can do it, would you?
We passed a people after we came out, and it's always on the way, sort of drives up and, and runs up, and patches, hold that, it's cold, it's, it's like, and...
Any other questions for Mr. Smith on his report? Thank you for your, wait a minute, we have a question from the audience.
What, what is against the fifth and two?
We done that once, and that was...
I can kind of explain this one. In the, in the nineteen eighties, the city actually passed a bond issue for a chip and seal project. At the time, it was three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, and it took about fifteen years to pay it off. The company came down, chipped and sealed, and in essence, the work was obsolete within a year. It was just a disaster.
I know it's the state, but it's all the time. I mean, it is not a, a major building, like, on the west of, Baptist Church, over, over the line. I don't think it's, I mean, the, the blacktop has gone right, and the good shit has seen it on it. I'm sure it, it wouldn't go for reasons of what we wrote on it. Another thing, the county's got a machine, or whatever, that'll put oil on, always uses on the straight road. It doesn't cost anything to use it, and if you seal this asphalt, it's not going to go hot, near, near as quick. If the water has to run off and stuff, going down here. And I don't, I don't know how much it costs for the oil, but I'm sure it might, the three and six and two would harden it. We could add it to the, to, that might be a stopgap.
Right.
I did talk to the company, I did talk to the company, Supersil, that did, did the hump, the, this hump out here by McDonald's.
You're right.
He just bought some new equipment for doing what Vernon's talking about. It's a new process, it's a combination of torch heads and compressed air that go across the, across the pavement. And they blow it out, they heat it up, then it lays oil, eighty cents a foot.
Oh, that's cheap enough.
And it, it, if you take questionable roads, you know, they'll stretch them out a few years to get them. You know, and, and the ones that are just starting to crack, you know, they're going to be longer. I guess, I put those out, you'd have to, maybe add some to it.
That might be something in our next budget year, looking ahead, paving projects, you might look at two prongs, one, roads that are beyond salvageable. And then, as Vernon says, taking roads that aren't there yet or heading that way, we might stretch our budget better that way.
We do have some good ones, that can maintain the last long time, and we're going to have to maintain them.
Can we put this, Shane, you have a question? It's not a lot to do. We've got a lot of.
Thanks, Shannon.
Thank you. And thank you for the comments, Vernon. All right, we're gonna move on down then to our city administrator's report. Mr. Burke?
Yeah, I have my report. My reports are more reflective of what my job is now rather than what I had been doing. I had been sending you these great four-page reports, lots of things on them, and, uh, I'm letting Chuck and Mitch take care of those things now, so, uh, my report just, just reflects. But I feel like you guys need me to do this. Uh, I have worked vigorously on the project that's given me about job descriptions and, uh, pay scales and all of that. And, uh, uh, this week has, has been terrible because there's been interruptions constantly. But nevertheless, uh, with Hillary's help, I've gotten quite a bit done, and so I'm, I'm excited about that. I've made it through all of the job descriptions, and that was a, a, a hill to get over, I'm telling you. Uh, again, Hillary found some old job descriptions that were in our computer, and plus, I, I had others as well, so. So I've gotten them all done and, uh, oh, anyway. And I'm ready to start looking at salary ranges, and, uh, and then once I get that done, then Hillary will help me put the chart together. I have the police department done. I've already showed it to Dan. I haven't shared anything to the rest of you, but I do have it done and, and it's, uh, I think it's, uh, good. I have the flowchart for the city completed. Uh, that's another thing you requested that I do, and I've, I've had it, I've got it done, and again, Hillary helped me with that. And, uh, and I would add that Leslie has been a big help as well, and it's been a team effort. A little shorthanded on folks here, but anybody takes all of it, it's, uh. So I've been, I've been spending lots of time on that, and, uh, of course, stayed in contact with, uh, with the developer for the O. H. property and in, uh, uh, Mr. Mason Dale as well, and, uh, looking at the railroad spur that we have here in town and how, uh, possibly that I could expand that railroad spur just in case I do get this business that I'm talking to. They couldn't have a, a railroad spur long enough to hold eight cars, and, uh, ours will hold about four. Uh, so, uh, I have, uh, talked to Jerry Clark and asked him for, uh, suggestions, and he has given me one. And, uh, and, and that's, that's workable. Uh, so, uh, I'm looking at that, and then, uh, I've asked Dan to, uh, set up some appointments for me, uh, as well, and so we're, we're looking to do that. Anyway, uh, that's a, that's a big project too, but, uh, I, I think, you know, just a little, a little more effort, we'll be able to get that done. Anyway, any questions for me?
Sam, tell, tell me, I'm sorry if I interrupt you, Mary.
No, go ahead.
Um, I'm excited about this. You sent us a private email on this, and then, uh, I'm reading about here the program called Certified Site through the Department of Economic Development. Could you explain to us what that is?
The, uh, Department of Economic Development has a, has a, a website, if you will. And, uh, what they put on there is, uh, what they call a certified site. It, it takes a lot of effort to get a site certified. There's a lot of things that go into that work. Water, electric, uh, and details on all of that. You can't just say it's got water. They wanna know what side of the water line, what the pressure is. Same with electric and so forth.
Nice.
So, once you get through that, that documentation on any site, uh, and they approve what you've got, then that site goes on their website. It is, uh, business-ready. What that means is a business can see that and say, "We want that," and they can move their business on that piece of property because it's got everything ready to go into the business. I'm pretty excited about it.
So essentially, if we have certified sites, they would be on a statewide website.
Yes, they would.
And prospective businesses that are being exploratory, see our twenty-three thousand car day traffic count out here, would then know that they're ex-certified sites.
Yes.
Developers could see that and.
It would also help me, as I, I've, I've told you guys that I've gotta do some travel in this next budget year. And when I go to Columbia or Death City or wherever and I meet people that wanna know what I have available here, uh, those, those properties will be on that site, so it won't be a matter of guesswork.
Mm-hmm.
I can call that site up and say, "Here's, here's what I've got." So, you know.
You can make a recruiting tool to hand out at these conferences.
Yes. And the, you know, business-ready, that's the part I like about that.
I'd like to apologize for you for texting in the meeting. I don't do that usually, but my brother had another stroke, so.
You ever, anything else, Mary? Did I answer your question?
Yeah, you did. I think that's nifty.
And then, the last thing on there, the, uh, the MP who, uh, much muck and M. F. meeting, quarterly meeting will be held March the eighth in Columbia. I'm gonna attend that, uh, via phone because I just don't have, have the time. I've got too many things to do, March eighth.
Including a city meeting.
Huh?
Including a city meeting that night.
Yeah, including a city.
Yeah.
That's all I have unless you have something for me. Did I leave anything out, Luke?
Sounds good.
Okay. Okay.
Any other questions from council for Sam Wad's floor? Thank you for that report, Sam. We move on then to the next item on your agenda, the mayor's report, and that's gonna be short and sweet. Most of the things that you see that I have brought before you all already and we talked about and we've done, done those things. Uh, did we miss the, uh, police report? Not yet?
He didn't have anything. He didn't, he wasn't on there.
We're, we're not, did you have anything to bring up tonight?
I don't have anything.
Okay. Well, then I'll, I'll just say a couple of things about the contract. We had a, a contract signing this afternoon, and I looked at it and principally the, the reason I went and talked to Mr. Link at length about this contract and, and the changes that they made, and they accepted all the changes that we presented. Uh, and then when it came back, as I looked at the dollar amount page and I pointed that out to Sam, there was a difference. A thousand dollars. But it's in our favor.
That's good, yeah.
So that's a good news. That's good news tonight from the mayor. And beyond that, uh, really don't have anything. I too am excited about this thing because I think that if you stay on this track, whether someone else is sitting here or whether I'm sitting here, to help you look into the future, then I think that the doors of opportunity are beginning to spring open in this town. And as you do, I have a phrase that I like to, to say, I think, "We're turning the lights on in this town." And we're gonna continue to move toward that mark so that we can achieve things for the people of this town. So truly, the Seymour can be great again.
Yep.
So, uh, with that, we'll move on to the C Attorney's Report. Mr. Link?
Now, I'll be brief, uh, just as kind of follow up with the earlier electric rate utility board appointments. Had some talks a while back. It's, in the future, I would recommend that we codify or put it in the ordinance book that what we want out of that board, you know, that they meet this, this second Tuesday or whatever. Have it be more of a codified quadric judicial, I mean, quadric municipal entity. But for the time being, it'd be my recommendation anyway that you let the board form and maybe a couple of times, you kind of work some of the kinks out before we start drafting ordinances to put an ordinance book. Cause then, we draft it now and then you say, "Well, we really wanna do this and add this on to their duties or whatever." And then, we don't want every other meeting to be adding or subtracting to the ordinances for this to go. So I just recommend we kind of let it, let them kind of get their feet wet and see how this is gonna all play out. And then, at some point, probably several months from now, we'll all bring back, you know, work with Sam and Larry, and we'll bring something to the board here past will actually go in our ordinance book. So section for this, and it's kind of like that. That's all.
Very good. Any questions for Mr. Link? Seeing none? Uh, thanks for that report. And we'll move on to the Alderman's report, and we'll start with Jim Ashley.
I, I don't have a thing, see.
Okay, then we'll move on to, uh, Councilman Chris, uh, Carpenter. I missed a call, Mary.
That's okay. Um, you said you cleaned ditches out. Did you do the one on Division that always floods right there at that field?
Yes.
Yeah, good.
Division.
And, uh, the property of the old skating rink, where do we stand on that?
Okay, that's a good question. I had a good lead on that, Mary, I thought, and, uh, Mr. Hoots that had Ashley done the fiscal work there to it and was a part, uh, owner, there was an agreement there. And when his agreement fell through, uh, so did he. He quit working on the property. Uh, I have been down to the property where they send the tax reports in Springfield and got no results from that. So we're, we're back to this thing that when we write these letters, when we, uh, do everything but condemn the property, the judge has to, to make a condemnation order, and then the city can go out and, and shut that thing down and, and give it a reasonable length of time and then tear it down. But we need the judge to start doing that. So, uh, we, we've got a new judge coming. Possibly we can talk to our old judge. He, he's gonna re- retire at the end of this year. And maybe we could ask him to look at that, see if we can get some, uh, condemnation reports, give him a list of what properties we feel like need to be condemned, like the one on Davis Street, for sure. And then tear those things down. And then possibly buy the lot.
It's a safety hazard. Kids could get in there and get hurt and you'd never know it.
Absolutely. It's just a place where people can go to smoke dope or to do all kinds of other things.
That's true. Unfortunately.
Yeah, terrible.
Oh, it's horrible.
That's been brought up before that Taylor.
Oh, yeah.
You know, used to.
Right. Yep, yep. In, in the plan, in the plan for, uh, do, doing commercial expansion. And we're also looking at housing expand. We have a housing shortage in this town. We, we're trying to make a plan so that we can grow this town, not only in the commercial area, but in residential as well. And as we do, we need to start cleaning up these old derelict properties. Uh, i- and when we do, we, we'll be something that other people's gonna look at and they'll come here and say, "How, how did you do that? How did you clean your town up?" But we've got to have a plan, and we have a plan, but I think the bottleneck on it right now is when we get to the place where we need condemnation, uh, by the court, we don't have that, so, uh. Did you, am I speaking correctly here, Councilman?
You, it's just the, the legal process gets bogged down as little to do with condemnation. I was saying, it would, it would always be obviously better to find the owners and work with that and handle it. If it's a place where people just do not have no interest in doing anything with property, at the end of the day, probably money would tend to likely buy the property for ten million dollars, which is, you know, that's just, you're just spending more and fewer probably than you would if you just buy it or, that's just something, that's a property by property.
And that's what I suggested, Mr. Hoots. I said, "If you'll put me in contact with that man, uh, then the city will move forward to getting this thing cleaned up." First possible purchase and tear it down, or, you know, maybe contractors, a young man, I could, as a younger man, I could see a lot of opportunities in that building, but, uh,
A lot of them.
It would take some work.
Does Mr. Hoots own that mound?
Does not. He did a quick claim deed.
Went back to the man who hit, who bought it from?
He quick claimed it back to him, his interest, uh, several years ago.
Yeah, we know who he is.
Well, but we don't know where he is.
He's in Springs.
Well, we, and I've been to the, to the house where they send the, the tax statements and talked to a young man that was there, and he very hesitatedly, uh, he, he wouldn't give me much information. Very guarded. So I don't know what the problem is that, uh, but the tax bill hasn't been paid on that property in two years, I can tell you that. Good question. Good, very good question. Anything else, Mary?
No, I think that's it.
Very good. Now, Ms. Chris?
The only thing I've got to, I got a call from this gentleman that had moved here from Iowa. And he said he drove all around town. He didn't know why he moved here now. He said it was pretty well trashed all over town. He wanted to know if they didn't have trash. Codes for trash been around the house and bringing it up around the house.
Of course, we do.
Yeah.
And we, we do write letters. I mean, that seems feeble, but, uh, you know, you do what the courts will allow you to do. I'm gonna continue to work on this Anderson Street, and then after we get that done, I'll look at another one and work on that until we get them cleaned up.
Like the trailer on Garfield.
Like the trailer on Garfield.
They not sell that trailer on Garfield or what is the deal with that?
Well, the lady called and, and Sam emailed me about that. I have not been down there, Sam, but, uh, I don't know who, who she thought was.
Cancelled, yeah.
Yeah, cancelled, cancelled.
And has placed every goth in the neon sign.
Delivered today.
All delivered today.
Okay, good, good question, good question. There's a follow-through.
I didn't know, I didn't know it was here already.
We just came, like you have, this afternoon.
Very good, and it's a short, short, uh.
That's all I've got.
Short thing of putting it up. All right, thank you, Nadine. Councilman Weber.
I do. I signed it last week. I've got several things on my knock list this week. I'll start out with, I've got a proposal here that I have, and I'll just have everybody take, I've got everybody's name on them. I always hated being in the crowd and not being able to follow along, so Chuck, you might pass some of those out. That way, we're all speaking from the same good book. In a nutshell, Larry, my proposal is to return city employees to a four-day, ten-hour-per-day work week, beginning with daylight savings time.
To go through hell on.
I wanna make it indefinite. And, um, well, hear me out. I, uh, under this proposal, essentially, daylight savings time arrives March ten, eleventh. Uh, and under this proposal, city employees would begin working ten-hour days on Monday, March twelfth. Um, I'll kind of give my empirical evidence here. Point one, I've personally spoken to every single city employee. That's everyone who works under the current hourly format, um, about five eights versus four tens. Uh, the preference is unanimous, meaning one hundred percent behind four tens. And above that, our city administrator, Sam, has told me he believes this model best serves the city, uh, both its employees and its residents for a variety of reasons, which don't care to go into if we want to. Uh, we used the four tens model for thirteen and a half years, uh, which ended last fall. Um, when the work week was switched from four tens to five eights last fall, as mentioned, in that motion, city workers will return the four tens in the summer. Uh, to me, it makes much more sense, we return this model when daylight savings time begins uh, because the day's become an hour longer at that time. Sam, at our request, at a closed session meeting, uh, two meetings ago, uh, told us he'd have our new salary charts read. uh, told us he'd have our new salary charts ready by our March eighth meeting. Um, having the new salary structure in place, at the same time, the new hours would begin, I think, would be ideal. In so much as we've now got job descriptions, we've got, um, everything kind of ready to go, so this fits. Number five, under this proposal, all work schedules in the four tens model, ultimately, we'd be at the discretion of the city administrator, who in turn could assign scheduling to his assistant or other qualified staff members. Uh, before the hours have changed to the four tens, I would suggest he meet with his department heads to ensure the city has proper coverage in all departments to properly serve the public. Uh, six, the four tens model would become permanent once implemented, only change that the administrator had evidence to believe the model wasn't effectively serving the city and its residents. In other words, from this point forward, the Alderman leaves this subject to the discretion of its paid professional administrator. Number seven, four tens model would not impact the police department, which operates on a system of twenty-four-hour coverage. I know this is a hotly contested issue. It has been, it was when it was done. I guess what I'm essentially saying, folks, is, uh, I do care what our employees think. Uh, I, 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 I do. And they unanimously tell me that the five eights model is jipping the public.
So what, what are you saying that, uh, that this would be indefinite?
Meaning that we go to the four tens, and until our paid administrator, who we pay to run this city, says differently, we stick with it. If he thinks we need to go to five eights, or six sixes, or twelve fours, then so be it. But it's his call. He is the guy who we pay to manage these people. None of us has the ability to give any of our city employees a direct order. He is the guy who does. He subscribes to four tens. If that, if we are going to hire administrator and have an administrator run our workforce, then I want for him to have the discretion of determining when they work and how they work. That's his job. It's not our job. It's not my job to tell Scott when his officers work. It's not my job to tell Chuck when he should work, or to even tell Sam when his people should work, unless I have evidence to convince me that the current model is not working. And this old model that we went on, uh, made our, our employees happier.
But yeah, when four of them was off at one time, we had four day weekends.
That's not accurate, Nadine.
That's not right.
Yes, it is.
No, it's not. It's not right. It's not. I, I, I've spent time, I've spent time looking at this system, how it worked. It was a, it was a, the way it worked was on a rotation system. If an employee was off on a, there's five days in a work week. No matter what, two days are going to hit on a Monday or a Friday.
And so they're off, they're off one day, you're saying? Now, come on.
Yeah, that is right.
Yeah.
Well, but you also have expanded, we don't have days where we need two employees everywhere.
So how?
The way we have it segmented by departments in this city is, we essentially have four departments. We have a street department, we have a water department, we have a utility department, and, uh, and we have a, uh, uh, what is my other department? What's, what, sewer department? Each of those employ, each of those departments have two employees. There are many days we don't need them both present. That's just, that's a fact. Uh, again, this isn't really my call. I just don't think it's my call. I think it's Sam Burke's call as our administrator. Again, if we're not going to listen to our administrator, what in the heck is the point of having? Now, again, as I've said before, if Sam fails on the job and we start having things not get done, and we start having huge breakdowns in this city, it's on Sam. At the end of the day, he answers for failures of this city. And accordingly, if he, if he fails categorically, then we'll terminate him. That's how it works. But at the same time, I don't want him going into this job with a loaded deck, where we put restrictions on him, where he cannot run this city the way he wants to run it.
Just because it work on five days a week?
I don't, I...
You got restrictions.
Why did we change it? I don't, I mean, I've looked at this objectively. I, I, I don't think it, it probably, looking at it now, should have been changed. Because what is resulted is, again, I've taken the time to talk to every employee, every single one. They don't like this. It's not because they're lazy or they want more days off. It's because they think they're more effective working four tens. It's as simple as that. They think they're more effective working four tens, as does their boss.
Ask Mike Burkey how much more...
It doesn't matter what Mike Burkey, he runs a factory that has ten employees.
But he was working four tens.
He's not serving two, he's not serving two thousand people. Mike, I've talked to Mike about four tens, and Mike told me, "Four tens, do they work for you, Mike?"
What's he working now?
Okay. They both work, correct? You, you, you were growing your business working four tens. Right. Well... Yeah, um... I, I think that the, the trip that, that this board has fallen into is, um... Oftentimes, public boards run into micromanagement. I think that we in the past have run into a little bit, in that, in the past, we've gone through and interviewed police candidates and gone through and, and honestly wasted people's time, uh, making decisions that I don't know that we were qualified to make. I'm not qualified to hire a police officer. I'm not a post-certified person. I'd rather trust my guy like Scott and our paid professional to make that decision. And again, if they make bad hires, then they can answer us for the bad hires. The same thing is true, I think, with determining work weeks. I'm not trying to disassemble what a previous board did last fall, because I think the intention was good. I also think that as we now have a six-month track record to look at that decision, I think that we can say that it didn't accomplish anything other than, pardon my con, than pissing off our employees. It's what it did.
Well, I think you're wrong.
Well, I don't.
I honestly think you're wrong, because I could see a lot more scenes to me like that they've got then.
Well, I don't think it has to do with, with, with the work schedule. I think it has to be the fact we've empowered our administrators to start getting things done. If you look at this, we're proactive. Now, I got Chuck coming in here tonight with a street report, where he's been proactive and given us a list of things futuristically we need to get done. We've given Sam knock lists. In the last few minutes, meetings I've been on this board, he's hammering his nap, knock list every time, hitting every mark we're asking him to hit. We've empowered our police chief to do his thing. We gave him a full staff of officers. Now we got them finding stolen vehicles in town and conducting investigations. He's got a training schedule that he's submitting to us.
Right.
When we're empowering these people, they're getting the work done. I want to continue to empower them, and one way to empower them is to say, "Your boss thinks your work schedule should be this. You think your work schedule should be this. You're a more effective employee in this model. Let's let our administrator essentially run the town, before we pay him to. We pay him good money to do that for us." I want to, again, uh, at, at the end of the day, it's all on Sam. This is his baby. If he's not hitting the marks, if he's failing us, then we'll deal with Sam. But until then, if he's in charge of this place, I don't think we have any business running the day-to-day operation. That's not our job, just like it's not a school board's job to tell Bruce Denny who should be teaching what class and who should be coaching this or that, or, I mean, the overs, we're, we're an oversight board, not an operations board. That being the case, let's let our, our version of the superintendent run his model, set his traps. And if he's not hitting marks, then we'll deal with it. I'll just do it this way. Sam, would you prefer your employees work four tens?
Yes, I would. I, I feel like it's the best choice. And, you know, I agree with what Mr. Burkey said there, that it's on both sides. I just feel like that the four tens is, is the best.
Do you think that it helps morale within your workforce?
I know it helps morale, because your example is exactly right. The folks are upset about it. They haven't gotten over it. I thought maybe, you know, things were kind of... But that has not happened. It still comes up every time we meet.
Yes, I work five day, four days than had worked five. I wouldn't want that either.
They're still working four days a week, Nadine. Has there been a savings in overtime since you've gone from four tens to five eights? That was one of the reasons?
Uh, well, that's really not a question that, that has a good answer, because we've had such bad weather. We've got all kinds of things happening that have really helped us out.
I'll do it this way. Do you think going to fi, to five eights has, has, there's been an economic benefit to it?
No, I, I, personally, I don't. No, I, I, I just feel like that people that are, are happy with their work schedule just get more done. You know, I mean, it just happens that way, and, uh... No, I don't think it's more even awful, but that's just my opinion, that's what I think.
Well, I think what you think means a great deal to me, because I'm on a board that oversees you running the city. We have empowered you to run this place. You're the day-to-day guy. And I don't want you playing with a loaded deck that essentially cripples you before you get started.
Well, with me, I, I have to be productive too, and when I have to deal with all these workforce issues, the cost of the time schedule, it takes away from the time that I have to spend on city fix, city things that I want to get done. Like I said, I have to deal with this every day, what comes up, in some form or fashion, every day.
Do you trust your department heads to run each of their departments efficiently?
You know the answer to that.
I do. Okay?
Yes, I do.
And those department heads, when you speak to them, do they prefer four tens?
I do.
They all prefer four tens.
They all prefer four tens.
Yes.
So, so what are you talking about? The ones in the office, the library?
I think that's Sam's discretion. I think it's Sam's call.
Well, now, daylight savings time, when that changes, I think that's fine. It's hot in the summertime. It's real hot.
My point is this, I don't want to fit a sunset claw, clause on this motion. I want to leave it as is, and until we have a reason to change it back. And to me, that reason would be our administrator says, "Well, it's not working." Or if this board has empirical evidence submitted to it from the populace that says, "You know, I called for so-and-so to get done and no one was on duty," well, then that's something we can address. But even in the four-ten schematic, there's never a department that is left without a person in it, correct?
That's right.
Bingo.
But, you know, there are days when there's just one person, but...
That's how it works.
That's the way it works, and, uh...
I'd like to afford people off one day.
And are people cross-trained to where if one department needs help from another, it's available to them?
Pet fever mine, and yes, 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 I would put together a, a process to make sure that that happened, not cross-train everybody that goes through. Yes, I have.
So that if the street department has one person and they need some help, then someone from another department that's busy that day can go and help them?
That's all we've been at, why?
Yeah, well, that's my point. My point is this, our goal, again, as has been stated, is to serve the public. I agree with that. Larry has said that, everybody, and I agree with that. I ask myself a simple question when I make a decision for the city. Is it good for the city? I think having a happy workforce and an administrator that can implement his plans, his vision, is good for the city. Because we trust you to hire you, then we need to empower you. And we've been working on that on a lot of different fronts, and I think the early results have been quite good. You've handled the commercial and economic growth issues quite well. And you've got good resources at your disposal, too. Larry is a huge asset for you, uh, especially in the economic and industrial growth zones. Um, you, so you have a resource there at your disposal, who has a talent in that field. In the day-to-day operations, that's your baby. So, again, this is why I propose this. It's not something I want to table and sit on and think about. Because a decision to change it wasn't something that was tabled and thought about.
It was for a month.
I would, I would...
It was first time.
Well, the way that the flow goes here is daylight savings time starts March eleventh. He would need time to set schedules, because we're going to change the way we're doing things. Um, and, uh, again, at our March eighth meeting, we're going to have quite a busy agenda, because Sam is going to come to us with job descriptions, which we requested from him, and salary charge, which we requested from him. It would, it would allow our employees to know when their work schedules are, beginning March twelfth, and what their salary schedules are, beginning March twelfth, and what their job descriptions are, beginning March twelfth. That's myself on it. I think we need to do this. Um, I, I think, again, uh, it benefits the city. I mean, if, if, I know that there's probably going to be some rebuttal to it, and I'm open to hear it, but...
Very good. Are you exhausted on that, Mr. Limmer?
Am I what?
Have you exhausted your...
I, I'm done with my arguments. I've gone through my, my seven points and, and, um...
And I see at the bottom of that, there is a motion?
There is a motion. It's, it's built into this, where as though I'm making the motion, and I'm seeking a second, and I'm seeking a vote.
I'll make a motion. I mean, I won't make a motion. I would agree, you know, daylight savings time, I'd agree with that.
I'll second Dan's motion.
Thank you, Jim.
There's a motion on the floor and a second then. And let me just interpose a little bit of thought there. Yeah, I don't know what the overtime has been, uh, Dan, since we started this program, and what it was before, because I've looked at it pretty consistently, and I looked at the work schedules pretty consistently. And I thought there was a, uh, uh... A, a problem in, in the way that we carried out our work schedule, because there were some that had, uh, four-day weekends, some had five-day weekends. And while the other fellows thought that they were being, uh, punished, for lack of a better word, because, you know, some were taking advantage of the program. So, uh, I think that, uh, looking at that and seeing if your overtime is greater than five eighths, go back to the seven, uh, you know, the, the four tens, and see if this works, if, if it be the pleasure of the council. And we know Sam wants it. Sam wanted it last time. Uh, but, you know, here's the thing. Uh, what I did for the city was I did a survey. And as you recall, no county that touches our county does any different than what we are right now. And the reason for that was economics, and they had the employees in mind as well. Now, when we move into the, uh, timeframe, when the days get light earlier, it, it makes, makes more sense to me, but to see somebody come in at seven o'clock in the wintertime, you know, you've got two hours before it gets daylight, you can't see the work out there in the street. Can't see the work on the pipe that's busted in the ground. You can't see how to trim a tree that needs to be trimmed. So you've got to have daylight in order to do that. Makes sense in the summertime, because you've got a longer day, and they can take off in the afternoon and do the things that they need to do, too. They've got a, they've got a life, too. So, uh, so that's why, that's why it was recommended. Uh, and it was, uh, a more effective way for all those people. And I said, "Well, you know, maybe it's something that we need to look at here, because it's a very effective system throughout the state." And it was pointed out to me, there are other people that do the four tens as well, and there are.
State of Missouri?
Yes, the state of Missouri does that.
Every agency.
But, you know, what kind of work do they do? You, my, my position is this.
They did a pretty good job of auditing us.
The entire country is moving from five eights to four tens.
Yes, but that, that, just what I wanted to speak to that. You know, I don't have a vote in that. And I was fourth into the vote that I had before. I really don't, you know, the mayor shouldn't be here to, to break the tie. He should be here to help you all run things and maybe suggest some things to you. That's what this position is here for. That's what this position is here for, and run the meetings in an orderly way.
I think that the, 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 the purpose behind my motion, more than anything, is to allow our boss to be a boss. So far, we've slowly, over the last month, empowered Sam. And I feel as though that as we have heaped responsibility on him, he has responded positively. He has, he has learned. I don't think learned, it's been empowered to delegate. Um, and, and, and I think he's, when he, as he's been given this responsibility, um, he's tapping resources, he's talking to us, he's, he's hitting the marks. And, um, but I think that something that is hindering him right now is he's not able to implement a work schedule that I think suits what he, his mission for the city is. And, um, so, again, we're at that summer mark, so to speak, and the daylight savings time is beginning. And that's the purpose behind this, and, um, let's see what happens.
So you've been on the board for what, two, three meetings?
Yes. But I've been a, I've been a, I've run, I've, I've owned and operated this newspaper for twenty. I was covering meetings when you weren't going to them. I covered Jimmy and, and, and have seen it all. I've been coming to meetings for 24 years. And, uh, I've watched all administrations of this city work, more so than anyone in this community of us. Uh, no one can match my attendance record over the last two decades. Um, I've, I've seen it all. I've seen what works and what doesn't. And what works is what worked when your husband was the mayor administrator. He ran the city. We trusted him, and Jimmy led us. Uh, he is the model of an administrator to me. Jimmy was phenomenal. And he took this city to wonderful heights. And since he left, we've not had a strong administrator since.
Right.
And in the short time span I've seen as we've, as empowered Sam, and I'm, I've been his biggest critic. I'm the one who wrote an editorial. He was worth 10 bucks an hour a year ago. And I'm watching this guy, and he's hitting the marks and getting her done. So I've been his biggest critic. And I'm here to say that he, he, I, I, I trust him. I, I, I'm, I'm willing to, to see how this goes. And, but I don't want him dealing with a, a deck of cards with 47 cards in it. I want him to have a 52-card deck. And this gives him a 52-card deck. And city's achievements will, will be his and the failures will be, too.
Sure enough, sure enough.
I like that he's, he's doing a good job, doing a real good job. And I think the boys are doing a good job.
I think they're doing a good job. I don't, I think they'll even do better if we put them on an out, on a, on a work week that they, that they like.
When we get those job descriptions in place and when we, we still need to review our policy and procedure manual, folks. I mean, there's some things, changes that need to be made, but that's for another time. Uh, one of the things that was my, my contention is that the vacations need to be planned in January. And that way, we can plan the schedule of work throughout the year. Uh, it needs to be changed. However, you know, that being said, uh, you know, these employees give you a job performance. And when they give you what you want, then we should be able to give them what they want. If they give us the same outlook and the same results under the four tens. And under that guise, I don't have a problem with that at all.
We've got a motion and a second.
So, we've got a motion and a second on the floor, and we're in discussion now, uh, Dan. So what I'd asked is, uh, is there any further discussion?
So, when will we see?
Just turn around?
No, 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 I meant the, the work, um, descriptions, the job descriptions.
Mark C. A. Mark C. A.
Mark C. A.
Oh, yeah, he's bringing us a poll of performance.
Now, now, the job descriptions are also gonna be followed with a critique sheet. And you're gonna get those together, I guess, Sam?
What are you talking about?
Well, performance, job performance rating.
Once we get the job descriptions in place and everybody agrees with them, then we can, yes, then we can, you know, you can, you know, see if people are performing to themselves.
Right.
And yes, if that's a secondary step, this other hasn't happened.
Oh, absolutely. But you see, your book ordinances does call for, your policy and procedure calls for performance ratings and increases, raises that are given predicated on performance. And we need to be doing that. You know, we need to be giving raises. And, but how can we know if we don't know what they're supposed to be doing and if they haven't been critiqued? We don't know.
It's been when Larry first, he's been trying to get this done ever since he's been the mayor.
Well, but Dan, Dan's got it in order, so.
The beauty of it is, is that, uh, two meetings ago, we set a deadline. Sam's on pace to edit. Uh, we asked for a flow chart. He's got a flow chart, Nadine. He's, he's, I've seen a preliminary salary schedule from the police department. I love it. It's, again, it allows our employees to, as they get themselves into home mortgages and as they get themselves into, into life, they can look at that chart and know where they're gonna be in 10 years. That really is important. Uh, I, I, we've got employees setting here. I'm sure they'd nod their heads in knowing that they can look at a chart and know that at year 20, where they're gonna be at. Especially as they, you know, uh, uh, future forecast, so. And for our perspective, we can start setting. We've talked about long-term goals. Larry has one-year plan, two-year plan, five-year plan, 10-year plan. What's the biggest expense of this city singularly? Payroll. Well, with these charts, now we know what it's gonna be. We can, we can hit marks and say in 10 years, our payroll's gonna be here. If, if we have the same workforce and the, again, that, that's what I like about this. We're, we're, we're looking at future planning. That's.
I like the, uh, idea of accountability.
Yes.
It, it holds everybody accountability for their job and their performance. And it lets them, in all honesty, lets them see what they're supposed to be doing. And if they're doing what they're supposed to be doing, then we ought to be able to give them a raise.
Yep.
Very good. I, I don't have any further remarks. Any other council person have any, uh, more, uh, discussion?
I think that we should at least give it a try.
Okay.
If this leaves the rails, then, then we can come back and revisit it. Let's try it, yeah.
It's about to come to a vote, Councilman Carpenter. So I suppose there's seen no other discussion. Uh, let it come to a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Seriously.
Yeah.
Seriously?
Seriously. You know, it's wonderful when people can, uh, can disagree from time to time and, uh, and agree from time to time and still go down the road together. Well, the motion, uh, is before you. I've asked for a vote. There's been four a's. Are there any n's? Yeah, oh, I thought I had four. Got three, three a's and one n. Very good. Let that be noted that Councilman Chris, uh, is a nay voter. And, uh, this will be implemented at what conjuncture?
March 12.
March 12, uh, is when this, uh, program will be.
In conjunction with the, uh, with the conjunction with the job descriptions and, and, uh, uh, salary charts.
Very good. I need a motion to take us into executive session.
Go may.
Go here a second. Uh, can I hear a roll call vote, please?
Jim Ashley?
Yes.
Mary Carpenter?
Yes.
Nadine Chris?
Yes.
Dan Homer?
This session of the Seymour City Council stands adjourned, and we'll move into executive session. Thank you all for coming.